There they are. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, August the 22nd, 2023, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the Peoria City Council meeting and call the meeting to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our city council chambers, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. Like to welcome the audience watching on ca- uh, cable, channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali, Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law. Madam Clerk?
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Okay, before that, I want to make a special announcement. Um, it's very hot outside, right? With the current excessive heat warning in place for the Peoria area, we wanted to make residents aware of the multiple cooling centers available in the city of Peoria. The following locations are available. City of Peoria Fire Stations will be open from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The Peoria Police Department will be open from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The Peoria Public Library will be available during operating hours. Advanced Medical Transport Building, located at the 1700 block of Sterling, that's the AMT building, will be open from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. The Dream Center, located at the 700 block of Hamilton, will be open 24/7, 24 hours, 7 days a week. However, single men cannot stay overnight. The Esther House, located at the 6800 block of Allen Road, will be open 24/7 for single women. The Peoria Rescue Mission, located at the 600 block of Southwest Adams, will be open 24/7 for single men and open during the day to anyone. In addition, if you feel your home or residence is unsafe due to the excessive heat, please call Peoria Cares at 309-494-2273 for assistance and to be connected with the City of Peoria Community Development Department. If you need additional resources, please contact the Heart of Illinois 211 Service for the most up-to-date information. Thank you. And now for the minutes. Uh, Councilmember Rigenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the joint town board and city council meeting held on August 8th, 2023, and the special city council meeting held on August 9th, 2023, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have one town item, 23-280, is, um, Town of the City of Peoria Financial Statements Annual Audit and Supplementary Information for year ended March 31st, 2023, with request to receive and file.
Councilmember Graham?
Madam Chair, I think, uh, Councilman Seer pulled township item. Did you want to address it before we make a motion on this?
Yes. My understanding, we have our auditor here with us tonight. Uh, maybe he could introduce himself and then with the permission from Madam Mayor, can he address us?
Supervisor Auditor?
Good evening, and thank you, Trustee, uh, Seer. Um, we do have here today, um, Principal Adam Polley, who was the auditor, um, here to provide a brief overview of the audit. A brief overview of the audit, and if there's any questions, he's open to answer that for you as well.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, Adam Polley, Principal in Charge of the Audit from March 31st, 2023. Uh, we completed the audit back in mid-May. There were three documents that were issued as a part of that audit. I'll be very brief with all three of those. Uh, first of which would be the financial statements themselves. What's worth noting is that within those financial statements, um, there's a piece that belongs, I will say, to the township, and then a piece that belongs to us as the auditor. So really, there's three pages in there, and that's our audit opinion. That's ours. That's what we are responsible for. All the other numbers, all the other information footnotes within the, the financial statement document are those of the responsibility of the township. Now, ultimately, the audit opinion we did give to the financial statements after performing our test work is we did give an unmodified, or in other words, a clean audit opinion over the financial statements. Second document that we issued is what's known as the internal control letter. This would be our opportunity to bring to light if there were any findings or recommendations, things of that nature, as we went through our audit of the financial statements. We did come across two items. Um, these are repeat items that we've had in the last couple of years, this being the third year that, um, we have performed the audit. Um, those two items, I'll, the first one is the fact that we, as the auditor, assist the township in putting together the financial statements, um, in accordance with accounting standards. The reason why that's a finding is, as I just mentioned, the financial statements are the responsibility of the township, but they utilize us to assist in ensuring all the footnotes, all the information are up to standards that are continually changing. We can't be a part of the internal control structure of the township. So by virtue of that, that is a, a finding. Um, the other one is segregation of duties. Um, this is, I should have mentioned, the first one is a common finding we do come across, especially in smaller municipalities. Same thing with segregation of duties. Uh, given the limited resources, it's not uncommon for us to come across, uh, the fact that there's not an ideal segregation of duties. As it relates to the township, specifically, we noted that bank reconciliations, um, as I understand it, they are being, um, reviewed and approved monthly, but the issue is there's no documentation of that. So there's no way for us as the auditors to verify that that's occurring, but it has been corroborated that that is ongoing. The other piece of that finding is, um, journal entries. So these would be any entries to the books that are not routine in nature, um, and, and there is not a consistent review and approval of each journal entry that's being done. So it'd be our recommendation in an ideal world to have that review and approval. Again, those two findings are both common. They're the, they're the same findings that we have had the last couple of years. Um, I say it's common to contextualize it. I'm not saying it's not worth paying attention to, because at the end of the day, um, for small municipalities, the best guard against those risks is close oversight by, by governance. Um, so pointing that out. The third document that, or the third report letter that we issued as part of the audit was known as the letter to governance. This would be our opportunity to express to the, to the council if we came across any delays with the audit, any, um, significant issues, disagreements with management. There was none of that during the audit, so it's largely boilerplate language and really nothing to report on. Um, and, and in fact, uh, working with the township, I thought went well. The audit went well. The first year that we worked with the township, the audit was issued in July. Second year was June, and this past year was mid-May. And frankly, I don't, I don't think it's going to be more timely than mid-May, given the end of year is March. That's a very brief overview of what we had issued, but I'm happy to answer, um, any questions anybody might have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, sir, for being here, um, tonight. Just uh, some comments and questions. Uh, number one would be, tell me a little bit about your firm's experience with other small offices, um, around the state or other states. Do you have any?
Yeah, I have plenty of experience, um, in terms of what?
Other, other cities or other township?
In terms of findings and things?
No, in, in sta- in term of doing their audit. I mean, I, do you audit other cities or township?
Yep.
In the state of Illinois?
I, I spend, uh, pretty much my entire year.
Okay.
Working with state and local governments.
Okay, so my first question would be about your opinion or the findings. Uh, obviously we have a problem that's been there for, uh, is it, was that the first year for this, this, this finding, or is that going on the last few years?
These findings have been in place for the three years that we've been performing the audit, and as I understand it, they've been there for several years prior to us taking that on.
So as I read your letter here, it talks about implementing the recommendations. So with your experience, and you have other clients that are in a similar situation, have you made rec- specific recommendation to take care of this, this, uh, this segregation of duties?
The recommendation is there to point out the risk, but the township, as well as other entities, um, often need to consider the cost benefit. Many municipalities elect to not address these issues, because frankly, it usually would involve, um, hiring a CPA, bringing on somebody new, or hiring new individual CPA or not. And they usually elect not to, and try to mitigate those risks as best as possible, um, through, through governance or other eyes to look, be a second set of eyes over each transaction.
So the township could not hire your services to be our CPA, but we could hire, if money was no object, we could hire another firm, a, a third-party firm to, to take care of these, these problems, correct?
Be an option.
Okay. Any other options that you, you, any conversation, ongoing conversation of how to take care of this problem right now?
Ongoing, not that I've been a part of.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Sure.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, would it be Corporation Council, uh, a, uh, something of a conflict for our finance department to serve in that role?
I, I think the trust, the Corporation Council for the, um, township is going to respond.
That's fine.
Is the question to me or to Mr. Hayes? I'm sorry.
E- e- either way, uh...
And I apologize. In terms of the city's finance department, I don't want to speak for Mr. Hayes. I'm trying to figure out how that would work in terms of additional duties and responsibilities, and how that trans, you know, translates into additional compensation, and I don't know if they're a member of a union or otherwise.
Well, let, let me just, um, the complications of the question, I, I always leave complications to other people, you know, I, but, um, is it, uh, prudent to have someone who works for the city fill this role as the, uh, secondary, or the onsite, uh, auditor? I, I see somebody shaking their head, no.
Manager is shaking his head, no. Uh, manager or, or Council Hayes?
Absent having an intergovernmental agreement in place with the township, this is a township matter. This is not a city matter. It's a separate unit of government.
I, yes, I, I understand that. I mean, there'd be compensation involved and that sort of thing, but this, a person from the city would not be considered a third party. Is that, would that be accurate?
Councilman, I'm, I made a loss, because I didn't review the audit letter, so apologize for that, but I don't generally pay attention to township matters because of, I'm relying on Mr. Redling Schaefer. The Intergovernmental Agreement Act gives broad license for governments to enter into these issues. There's risks and costs involved in this exercise, um, and those risks are significant if there's, if an issue arises in any financial matter. That said, sharing resources for financial matters such as payroll practices and things like that is quite common amongst small units of government, and so, could we do it? Yes. The issue of whether we should do it or not, that's for this council to figure out. The issue of can we do it? We can put something together. It'll cost money and increase the city's risks. Thank you.
Well, if you could concentrate on the word "should," I would appreciate it. In other words, is it not a very good idea? It, it's not that I'm proposing it. I'm just wondering how we might be able to get around this problem.
In order to develop an answer to that, I would like to explore that with this auditor, our auditor, our finance director, as well as the city manager, before I would respond to that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Graham, uh, Trustee Graham?
Supervisor Leary, uh, when you and I discussed this, um, there was some indication that there was another layer of oversight, and that would be with our city clerk. Can you elaborate on that?
Absolutely. The, the systems that were set in place, and this has been going on for decades, um, in order to perform the checks and balances, meaning that I am just not writing checks and there's no one overviewing them. Um, I have our, our bookkeeper, she does all of the, um, journal entries. I review all of the checks. I sign the checks. Before any checks are taken out, they are brought down here to City Hall, um, in which they are taken to the clerk's office. The assistant clerk, uh, town clerk, actually reviews all of the, um, all of the checks. In addition to that, we have the documents attached to those checks, so there is, you know, checks that are being written, but what are they written for? And then after it goes through the, um, assistant town clerk, it then goes, is reviewed by the town clerk, who is, um, town clerk Stephanie Tar, and she reviews them before we receive them again, and then they, uh, they go out. The auditor made mention of the journal entries and the bank reconciliations. Um, both of those are not done in one place. So the bookkeeper does the journal entries, um, at the township office. The bank reconciliations are done at the clerk's office, um, through the clerk's office. So that way, we have a separation of, of duties set in place, um, to review all of the checks that are going out before they are actually going out, gone out. Um, I don't know if Stephanie would like to elaborate on what her system is, but in the end, once we receive their bank reconciliations, um, our journal entries are backed up by the bank statements as well to make sure everything is in balance. Now, just pass it over to Steph.
Sure. So when we receive the statements and the checks in our office, we do have our own journal entries that we enter them into, um, and then we consolidate that with the bank recs as they come through. But I do have an assistant who reviews every single one. He does a, um, a calculation tape for me, um, just to make sure the totals are correct. He'll give them to me. I'll review each one. If there's a discrepancy, I'll ask, uh, Latrina, or I'll ask somebody else, uh, in the town office as to the discrepancy, and we'll go from there. It's usually just very small. They'll correct it if it needs to be corrected, or they'll provide an explanation. Um, after I get everything resolved, I do sign off on those and then send them back to the town office.
Thank you.
Have you communicated to, uh, Mr. Polley that we have that system in place with another layer?
I have. Um, from my understanding, this is, I believe that the clerk's office have never, the auditor has never gone to the clerk's office, but because we've never had an actual, um, person that is employed by the town that does audits and audits only, um, I don't know if that is defined as a separation of duty, and that's why there's kind of a, you know, that, um, statement that was made within that financial report. Um, this is not anything that is, um, new to the township. Um, this is pretty standard, and as I stated before, uh, this has been the operations for at least, for sure, over two decades.
Right, but, um, I don't think that the critique that there is an inadequate segregation of duties is accurate, based on your explanation and our clerk's involvement. So I guess I want to know from you, Mr. Polley, what criteria you need before we'll can, we can stop having this kind of write-up that we have inadequate segregation of duties?
Well, let me back up. Our process going into each audit is we obtain, uh, documentation from the township that outlines their processes and controls in place. We utilize that to perform sort of walkthroughs and see that there is documented evidence that that is consistently happening on every transaction. From there, um, when we get to the end of the audit, we provide drafts to the township of all those documents that I had laid out previously. We ask, is there anything that needs to change, needs to be edited? I, you know, um, there was, there was nothing. It was, it was approved. It was, looks good. So we were not privy to anything additional, and if, if there's something that needs to change for the next audit in terms of the, the documentation, we will perform our test work over that and double-check and make sure that is consistently being applied, and we'll go from there.
So you can't know what you don't know?
Do our best, but certainly can't.
The description of what we just went through with the, um, city clerk's office involved, does that alleviate some concern so that we don't have a write-up like this in the future?
Potentially.
It's what?
Potentially.
Okay. Yeah, because, I mean, I think if you knew that, it might minimize some of your concerns about not enough oversight and more of a check and balance system. So appreciate your coming tonight. I was absent, uh, when this was pulled. I asked Councilman Seer to, uh, be the second district councilman and the, and the emissary to the township offices, and we're always glad to see you. You do a great job. We just want to be sure we make some correction if necessary to alleviate any concern that, that you might have about how we're conducting the people's business. I thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, I would move to approve. Uh, let me see how we need to do this. Um, we want to receive and file the, uh, City of Peoria Town and the City of Peoria Financial Statements Annual Audit and the Supplementary Information for the year ended March 31st, 2023, at this time.
Seconded by Councilmember, uh, Trustee Seer. Um, discussion. Trustee Rigenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Trustee Graham, for the line of questioning there, because you were going exactly, asking some of the things I was, um, concerned about. And I guess my request to our supervisor would be that the information that you and the clerk just outlined is communicated properly to the auditor, because clearly there was some kind of breakdown in communication between what you've told us and what you've told them. So, um, I think it's critical that we have those checks and balances in place. We all have those horror stories of what happened in Dixon, so, um, let's make sure that the auditor gets the information that will keep those kind of, um, concerns from being raised next year. Thank you.
Welcome. There's no more questions. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at the city agenda on the consent agenda. 23-291 is a communication from the city manager and corporation counsel with a request to approve Third Amendment to the American Tower Corporation Site Lease Agreement for the Pioneer Parkway Tower. 23-292 is a communication from the city manager with a request to approve an agreement with Iron Hustlers Excavating in the amount of $42,950. 23-286 is a communication from the city manager and corporation counsel with a request to adopt an ordinance amending Article 19, Operation of a Cannabis Business, of Chapter 18, Licenses and Miscellaneous Business Regulations of the Code of the City of Peoria. 23-293 is a communication with a request to approve the site application for a Class K Rental Hall Liquor License with On-Site Consumption and Retail Sale of Alcohol for Haven on the Farm, Inc., doing business as Haven on the Farm at 6221 West Route 150, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. 23-294 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Sister City Commission with a request concur of Thomas Minnold and Patricia Malak. And 23-295, our appointments by Mayor Ali to the Advisory Committee on Police Community Relations with a request concur of Stephanie Lowry, Gretchen Emick, Catherine Shad- Shadle, and Karen Wilson, and that completes our consent agenda.
Are there any items to remove from consent? I get a motion to approve, moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at first readings. 23-296 is a communication from the city manager and corporation counsel with a request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance amending the city council rules regarding electronic attendance to include for emergency childcare.
Council Hayes?
Thank you, Your Honor. Governor Pritzker signed what is now Public Act 103-0311, uh, a piece of legislation from this year's session that expands the reasons under which, um, members of public bodies may attend, uh, meetings electronically. We have a rule in place, uh, that includes all of the statutory reasons that a member can attend electronically. Uh, this legislation expands that to allow, uh, for a member to attend electronically when they cannot attend due and, due to an unexpected childcare obligation. Uh, staff has prepared, um, an ordinance for the city council's consideration to add that reason to our own local rules, which is required in order to allow members to take advantage of that rule. Um, the process by which that rule is enacted won't change. It still requires notification to the clerk, the ability to communicate, things like that, but, uh, this would be an additional reason if it came to bear on one of our members, both at our council level, but also at our boards and commissions, that they could attend electronically. Thank you, Madam.
You're welcome. The only question that I had, uh, counsel, was that you indicated that the governor's, uh, ordinance speaks to emergency childcare, and then the write-up change says unexpected childcare obligations, and it doesn't say emergency. Should that say unexpected emergency childcare obligations? Should that say unexpected emergency childcare obligations?
The word emergency in the, in the agenda is in our full and the actual legislation reads unexpected childcare obligations. And that's the way the ordinance modification reads.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question and sorry for that confusion, Your Honor.
Thanks for the clarification. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to receive and file the first reading.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash two ninety-seven is a communication from the city manager and director of Public Works with a request to approve a change order for the landscape stewardship and maintenance project with JIMAX Landscaping LLC for 2023 and to authorize the city manager to execute the change to increase the original contract in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have this item and the next item. We have two contract amendments that our Assistant Public Works Director, Cy Maroon, is here to explain and answer any questions the council may have. So if you don't mind, I'll turn the floor over to our Assistant Director.
Good evening. Is, am I able to be heard on this mic? Very good, thank you. So the first item that we're here is for an increase of seventy-five thousand to our landscape stewardship contract. The, we're asking for a change order. We're not asking for any additional funds. We're not asking for an amendment to the budget. This money is, is in the fund and we just need to move it over for, for contract purposes. So as I said, we're not, we're not looking for anything more than what was, it's already been appropriated. Just need to have it transferred into the contract funding. It just kind of goes to show that we've increased our, you know, the amount of work that we've been doing to have to increase this line item. So we're, we're good with all that. We just want to make sure that we're, we're going to follow through till the end of the year on this one.
Thank you. Questions for Assistant Director Maroon? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Assistant Director Maroon, was this anticipated at the time that the budget was approved?
Well, we didn't anticipate that this was going to happen as, as it has, as it's turned out. What we, what we've done in years previous is we've set aside a little bit of money just in the account, not tied up with the, with the contract funding. And this year, because of the fact of the amount, of the additional amount of work, the increased amount of work that we're doing, it's requiring us to take this funding and do a change order.
I understand that, but, so it was not anticipated at the, this is a fifty percent increase in both of these items, which seems like a lot. And I'm, I have to express some ignorance to the idea that it's in there, but it was not appropriated or however you put it. You put it quite well. But in some sort of a normal year, would this further appropriation occur?
No, I think as we go forward, we're going, when, when we, when we get our final budget numbers, we're going to, you know, we're going to apply this money, this funding into the contract fund so that we don't have to come back annually and ask you for a change order or for an amendment.
Do you typically, I'm, I'm sorry, I've only been here a little more than four years. Do you typically come back at this time of the year for a further appropriation?
Typically, no.
So what, what is different about this year?
The amount of work that we picked up, the increased purchasing of flowers, trees. We've, we've done quite a bit more this year than we've done in the years past. We're increasing the amount of work that we're doing, the amount of beautification throughout the city. We, and so what we've done in years past is we've pretty much started out with this type of, of funding and, and it seems to have rolled through, but this year was a different year. We anticipate next year to be a different year and going forward, they will become different years and from this, from, from previous years. So yeah, you don't, I don't think we're going to anticipate coming back. I think we're going to, talking to Director Kyle Craddy, Director Finance, and it just makes sense to move it all at one time into the contract funding.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
And I-
Any other questions? Can I get a motion approved, moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young? Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash two ninety-eight is a communication from the city manager and director of Public Works with a request for the following. A, approve a change order to the tree stump removal by size and brush trimming by hourly rates contract with JIMAX, Inc. for 2023 and to authorize the city manager to execute the change to increase the original contract in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. And B, approve a change order to the emergency tree and brush trimming by hourly rates contract with JIMAX, JIMAX, Inc. for 2023 and to authorize the city manager to execute the change to increase the original contract in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. And we will need separate votes on each.
Okay, thank you. Assistant Director Maroon?
Thank you. This is the same situation. It's just a change order, not asking for anything additional, just to move the money. And we've got two separate contracts. One is just for the daily work that we have in, in terms of tree removal. The second one is for emergency, the emergency funding for tree removal. And so again, we, I, I just want to say this. We've had droughts for, for many, many, many years. And the, we're starting to see the result of these droughts that we've experienced over the years. And I'm talking, you know, twenty years ago, not just recently. And we're, we're dealing with that in the recent, so the amount of trees that are coming down or the amount of trees that need to come down have significantly increased. And I know a lot of you know that because you're out in your, in your districts or your neighborhood. So, but, but that is a big increase that we're seeing. We have two ways that we do tree removal. We do them in-house with our forestry crew and we do them with contract, with, with a contractor, which in this case is JIMAX, to do emergency removals as well as some of the larger trees that we, our equipment doesn't allow us to get or to take down. So just again, this is just something that we've really increased the amount of work, the amount of activity that's taking place out in the community. And obviously, the number one thing is safety. So we've got a pretty good list of trees that may not even be gotten to this year because of, of the time of the year and, and we're going to be rolling into snow pretty soon. So with, you know, with the time of the year and the amount of requests that we have is just very significant. So we're just asking for this change order on this. Again, no, no additional funding, but just so we can carry through till the end of this budget season.
Thank you. Councilmembers Grab?
Director Maroon, when some of these diseased trees or damaged trees come down, what is the city's policy about replacing them with a new tree?
Yes, if we take one down, we replace. We are actually installing more trees now than, than we've had in years past. Again, that's why we're needing some additional funding. We, we're not just, we're not waiting for trees to come down to plant. We're planting trees throughout the city and throughout the community and on a regular basis. Right now, we're starting, this is not really the best time of the year to plant trees because it takes so much water, but come September, late September, October, we'll be back out in the community planting trees again.
So you're documenting where trees are coming down, where we need to?
Absolutely.
And is this our nursery stock we're using?
Pardon me?
We're replacing the trees that come down. Are we using tree stock that's cultivated at our nursery? Or are we buying them?
We're buying locally, yes.
Buying locally?
We don't have, we're talking about, looking at doing another tree farm on our end. But the issue with the tree farm is, is that wherever we do it, we have to make sure we have access to water. And, you know, it'd be a great place to, to put them in vacant lots, but without water, it becomes an issue. But we are certainly looking at that as an option.
And recently, we had some plants bite the dust in the Fulton Plaza area. You've done a review of how well our plants have done that the city cares for with the help of JIMAX. I believe they're our designated cultivator and designated entity to actually water them. And what were your findings?
So we, during this time of the, the week and, and the, over the past couple of weeks, with the amount of heat that we're dealing with, they are watering twice a day. Once early, early in the morning between four AM and eight AM and then coming back in the afternoon for a second round. When we're not doing the two a day, we're, we're doing it once a day throughout, well, obviously Fulton Plaza, but City Hall and then all the flower baskets that, that are on the street poles, streetlight poles.
So how have we done this year overall?
So we've actually lost a few plants. They've, they've succumbed to the heat and just the dryness and the drought and the things that we're dealing with. Some of that has to do with some of the soil that we're, that we have in Fulton Plaza. But overall, honestly, I, I think we've done very well. We've done some research today and did some inspecting of the entire layout of Fulton Plaza and had some expert advice on it. And we've lost about ten percent so far of, and hopefully that's going to be the end of it. This being the first year of planting perennials, take another year or two and they're going to be, they'll be solid and strong once we get through and get some, get some depth in them.
Manager Maroon, in our uptown and downtown area, we have the, I call them cement squares or planter areas. Who maintains those from one end of Main Street down to, to the final end, the river end?
Are you talking about the wrought iron decorative type?
Well, we, we have, for example, in our entertainment district, we have little squares where we have plantings and we have them up top of Main Street Hill and other places. We probably have fifteen or twenty. Some of those areas, I find weeds growing. And I'm wondering whose responsibility that is to keep those de-weeded or to have something hardy that can be planted there that doesn't require a lot of supervision and, and care?
So a lot of those are, are shared amongst different entities within the community. So we, Public Works, maintain and oversee, and do the overseeing of, of all that. But we also have, we, we utilize Peoria Core in some areas. We utilize our contractor in some areas. So there's a shared amount that, that we split up that goes to the different entities.
So if I have somewhere there are weeds taking over, do I have to ask you who's responsible for that one? Like at the top of Main Street Hill?
At the bottom of Main Street Hill?
At the top.
Oh, at the top of Main Street Hill.
There's more. There are more, but I'm trying to-
Yeah, you know, in, in our estimation, or our, our thoughts and feelings are that if, if, if people would see something and they would call us, we're certainly going to, you know, take care- You know, we can be in a lot of places most of the time, but we're, we're not everywhere and we don't see it all the time, depending on where our crews are working and where the supervisors are traveling through the city. But sometimes, you know, we do rely on, on the citizens to pinpoint some things that are out there for us to, that we need to address. And, you know, we're happy to, we're happy to address it.
Uptown Maine to downtown Maine, I think we have about thirteen of those areas. And I think optics, and I know this council and its strategic planning exercises stress the importance of optics, having a clean city and areas that are under our jurisdiction not having weeds growing. So I'll be happy to let you know where there are problem areas. But also, I think it's important that the public understand that we're not going to have showy, beautiful flowers at our rain garden area. The four areas we have at Maine and University, they are not designed, they may look like weeds, but they are not. Can you put some clarity on that?
So yes, there's a lot of plants that, that look like grass or overgrown grass that are actually native plants. So and, and without really understanding what they are, you know, some of them do legitimately look like weeds when they're not. So if there's, I'm, you know, if there's a question as to whether it's a weed or not and, and someone doesn't know and wants to kind of help out or let us know about it, we'll certainly take a look at it and make that determination and do what we need to do to address it. And now that it's on, as you've spoken about Main Street, now that that's on, on my radar now, I will definitely do some addressing to those planter boxes that you're referring to.
Thank you, Manager Maroon. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Maroon, I, Director Maroon or Assistant Director Maroon, I just had a couple of questions and I know you and I've had conversations about older trees and some of our older neighborhoods. You referenced the drought and I, I have noticed in places in and around the first district where we've got a lot of old, old trees. And in some instances, I know there was one episode a few years ago where the tree had died and split in half and just half of it fell over into the roadway. And so we've got some areas where we've got older trees that are lined along, maybe in some cases, I don't know if it would be the public right of way, but right near where the curb is or the road. Do you have a plan for testing these to determine the age? We've seen in some instances where huge tree limbs have fallen down. And I think you remember the one I showed you recently. Of course, it's in a backyard, a monster of a tree limb and it's fallen from the neighbor's house over to the other person's house. But unfortunately, the house next door is vacant. And so we've got a situation where we've got this monster of a tree limb that has fallen into a neighbor's lot and she doesn't feel liable for it. But there are similar circumstances in front, frontal areas of properties. Do you have a plan for testing some of these trees in older neighborhoods? And, you know, with the drought situation, do you foresee more work next year? Because we've got some dying trees all over.
Lots of trees out there that need, need addressed and need attention. We have a tree condition index that we follow that has, it was a rating of all the trees that we have in the public right of way. And it tells us, you know, the year that it was rated and if it's in poor condition, good condition or excellent condition. So we, we do look those over before we do anything, when, you know, once we get the request for, for a specific tree. We can also utilize a, an arborist that will tell us. Sometimes trees look healthy. They're green, but they're not necessarily healthy. So we utilize arborists to give us that professional opinion before we go in and start taking down more and more trees. The last thing we want to do is take down more and more trees. We want to be green. But, and back to Councilman Grab's question, we do plant when we do remove. So we are covering ourselves in that aspect, but there's a lot of trees out there that do need attention. And so we've got that, a couple of different options to use to analyze the trees.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move to approve item twenty-three two-nine-eight-A, please.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to approve, move to approve item twenty-three dash two-nine-eight-B.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
23-299 is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to adopt an ordinance amending the temporary moratorium on tobacco licenses for Tony's Market.
Council Hayes?
Thank you. Uh, as council knows, a moratorium was established on tobacco licenses on July 11th to allow staff to prepare, uh, a review as well as, uh, recommend an ordinance for the council for classification of licenses. We are on track to submit that as a first reading on September the 12th. But tonight, we're before you asking for the approval of an ordinance amending the temporary moratorium for tobacco licenses to allow Tony's Market, uh, to apply for and continue the process for the, uh, issuance of a license. Tony's Market is changing ownership. They've been a stable, uh, retail outlet. It's a small grocery store, um, with tobacco, um, but it does have a wide array of, uh, retail items for sale. So, um, the, um, purchaser wants to proceed with the purchase, uh, this being the continuation of an existing footprint, um, we felt was appropriate to seek council's indulgence and modify the ordinance as we did for four, um, applicants that were on file before the moratorium to allow this to go through. I'm told, uh, as of yesterday, there were no additional license applications on file with the city, so we don't have any other instances. And as I mentioned, at the next council meeting, we'll be, uh, introducing for a first reading the, uh, ordinance and repeal the moratorium, which we'd ask you to take action on in concert. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions, uh, for council on that? Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would just, uh, um, tell Counselor Hayes, we appreciate that, that background, and this is exactly the kind of thing that we knew could potentially come up when the moratorium was put in place. So I think this is a common sense solution, and with that, I would move for the approval.
Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
23-300 is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to consider the site, site application for a Class B restaurant 50% food liquor license with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol for Empire Lounge LLC, doing business as Empire Lounge at 3033 North Sterling, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to deny. And the city's clerk, the city clerk's office was in receipt of an email from the applicant just last evening, uh, requesting to withdraw this petition, and so there is no action required on this item.
Okay, thank you. Let's keep, keep it rolling.
All right. 23-301 is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to receive and file the month ended June 30th, 2023, unaudited financial report.
Manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, we have with us Finance Director Kyle Craddy, and I'll turn the floor over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'll run through the report, uh, really quickly. Um, in front of you is the June 2023 report. Um, some of the highlights in the general fund, revenues are down about $4.6 million, or 9.91% from last year. Um, that was anticipated during the budget. Um, overall, um, if you just look at the budget on a allocation of 1/12 of the budget going in each month, we're slightly below budget on revenue. Um, however, I do not anticipate that the city will be in a position that our revenues are not at budget or higher in the general fund by year end. We just have a lag in a lot of the state revenue sources, um, up to three months on sales tax, for example, that keeps this number artificially lower through most of the year. So there's not a concern on my end on a revenue standpoint in the general fund. In terms of expenditures, uh, we are up 9.8 million, uh, year over year, or 24%, while that number might sound alarming at first, um, that is more of an indication of, uh, a higher level of spending of the city's ARPA dollars this year than last year. Um, and we also made a change within the finance operations of allocating our transfers on a monthly basis instead of at year end. So we're trying to smooth that out over the year, so that's where you're seeing that number. Overall, for all city funds, um, we've received $136.5 million in revenue and expended out $110.2 million. The net income for the city at this point through the years, it's a $26.3 million, um, but I just want to note with that, there is $20 million in debt that was issued on behalf of the Civic Center, still sitting on our books, um, and that will come off this report in August. Um, so overall, um, the financial position of the city is strong, it continues to stay strong, um, and I think we'll have a lot of good conversation during the budget about, uh, what we're looking at going forward. Um, and with that, I'm available for any questions that anyone has.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure I got any question, but, uh, Mr. Craddy, for number one, I just want to say thank you to you for taking all my calls and, and, and your explanations are always greatly appreciated. I just want to make a comment mainly more towards our, our manager and my colleagues, really as we go into the city, uh, budget pretty soon here. I was telling, uh, Director of Finance today that three of our biggest accounts really are stormwater utility, uh, sewer and state, uh, MFT motor fuel tax, and all three are really designed to help our constituent with our roads. And we know, especially for me in the fifth district, it's all about roads, roads and roads. So I'm hoping that, I know we have a plan, part of our CIP is to, uh, spend these monies the next three to five years, but, uh, I hope that, uh, we'll invest them wisely because now, I mean, our, our, uh, really our, our financial statements in best shape that I've seen in many, many years. So hopefully we can make great decision in the future how to invest these millions of dollars for fairly for all of us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions? Thank you, Director. I think we, let's see. Need a motion to receive and file, moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. 23-287 is a communication from the City Manager, Chief of Police and Director of Public Works with a request to receive and file the traffic calming program manual for the city of Peoria.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you. We have our other Assistant Director of Public Works, Andrea Klopstein, here to walk through the proposed traffic calming program that we'd like to talk about, and I'd like to turn it over to her. I think she has a presentation, and then we'll be able to answer any questions after that.
Thank you for letting me come and talk to you about traffic calming. It is a very important topic for our community. We get lots of feedback from our residents about this issue. So the first slide is just what is traffic calming? So it's education, enforcement, and then visual and physio, physical measures to reduce speed to, and volumes to an appropriate level. So what that means is that not every treatment will be applicable to every road. So an arterial that has lots of traffic will have different types of traffic calming than a low-volume residential road. Our goal is to find the best treatment for each individual circumstance. So the goal of traffic calming is to improve safety for all roadway users, so not just vehicles, but also pedestrians, bicyclists and transit users. Traffic calming can positively impact speeds, volume and safety when implemented appropriately. So this slide has some data on the number of requests that we receive. We've had about 115 since 2019, when we started tracking them. Some of them are waiting for the city, some of them are still waiting for neighborhood to submit petitions or to continue through the process. We've closed 21, and we have eight that are on our work plan. So the traffic calming program that we're presenting tonight is different than the traffic calming policy that was adopted in 2018. This slide has some of the highlights of the differences between the policy and the program. So the policy is adopted by council, and only council can change the policy. The program is something that council gives direction to staff and then staff implements. So staff can make changes to the program as needed as things change. The policy was adopted in 2018. We haven't made many changes or any changes to that policy for the past five years. So that's why we want to make this a program, so we can adapt on the fly and continue to make improvements. Another change is that the original policy was for neighborhood streets only. One of the big things that we've discovered is that traffic calming requests come in on many streets. Um, we've had requests on Knoxville, which is not a city road, but it still shows you that the volume of traffic, where we're getting complaints of needing traffic calming, varies greatly compared to Knoxville to a small residential road. So we've expanded the program to include all city-owned streets, which is the next one, or I should say, most city-owned streets. Dead-end streets, really short blocks, aren't going to be eligible because they're just too small and they, no traffic calming measure would be appropriate other than education and enforcement. Another thing that we incorporated into the new program was we wove in the police department. So a lot of times what happens is we get a call and we're like, that's an enforcement issue, so then we send it to PD. And then PD gets the same call and says that's an engineering issue and sends it back to engineering. And we go back and forth over who, who's doing what and who should be responsible. So the new program, the calls will come into Public Works, we'll send out the initial form to get information, and then the petition that the neighborhood signs will ask if they want engineering, enforcement or both. Enforcement would be someone out there issuing tickets, being visible on the street. Engineering is the built things that we could do to help slow traffic down. So that's the difference between the two. I would expect that we'll probably get most people to say they want both, but we'll see what the neighborhood say. The last thing that we have included in our new program is significant public education. And what we want to do is make sure that the neighborhood is talking to the neighborhood about slowing speeds down. Because when the city comes, we're an outsider asking the neighbor to slow down. When it's your neighbor that's saying, "Hey, my little kids want to play in the front yard," it's probably a little easier to get a positive response. So that's what we're going to try and utilize, is the neighborhood to help control those speeds and get the neighborhood what they want in their own streets. So the next steps, we will have this, the initial form on the website. So now it will be easier for residents to contact us and say there's a problem. So there'll be a web form that we will have up and running very soon after we get this adopted. And then, uh, once this is approved, we will switch over to this new program and the old policy will go into our records for archives. And that's all I have on the presentation. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. I have a question regarding the neighborhood request. What does that entail for someone to send a, a request in?
So the initial form can come from a, a citizen, just one person, and then we give them some information. So they'll get, uh, a flyer or pamphlet to hand out to the neighborhood, and they'll go door to door within the area that Public Works will help identify, and they'll talk to their neighbors and say, "Hey, I think there's a speeding problem. Do you also? And if yes, could you please sign this petition?" That petition will have the checkbox that says engineering, enforcement or both. So the neighbor, we get feedback immediately from the neighborhood of what the whole neighborhood wants, so that we know what to do moving forward.
Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, there has to be, it sounds like a petition? Okay. Is there like a certain percentage in, in the event that everyone in that block or that neighborhood doesn't sign or agree?
Yes, so I think it's 51% for the first petition, just to say there's an issue, and then that goes higher once we go into the, this is the selected measure, and then the neighborhood votes on if they agree with us building that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your presentation, Deputy Director Klopstein. I just want to, uh, just give a comment and, and kudos to you and, and your team, um, as a district council member. Uh, probably one of the top three calls I get is for speeding, and I know that you all are taking this serious and, um, addressing it, obviously with the new policy, but, uh, we really do commend you. Um, it's a collective effort, though. We need your help, we need police, and we need our neighbors in order to really address this issue, uh, throughout our neighborhoods. But I just want to publicly commend you all for what you all are doing to try to address this very important issue in our, our different districts and city. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Assistant Director Klopstein, I'd like to second, uh, Councilman Allen's. Kudos to you. As you know, I've looked over this, uh, document and I, I like it very much. I would like to ask our Corporation Council whether we need to positively get rid of our policy in order to implement this new program.
I'd want to make certain that the drafters didn't have any issue with the repeal of the old policy before we got rid of it, just to make sure there isn't something I wasn't aware of, but my take is that this is a full replacement, but I don't know. I think that was...
I think, I think it is, but we have a policy in place. Do we need to get rid of it in order to, uh, approve the new program?
I think this would be read as supersede that prior policy, and I think leaving it in that way allows what's occurred since the adoption of that to now to remain supported by the policy that was in place, and this one supersedes it. So I don't think that it's necessary to repeal the item. I think that intention is clear.
Okay, thank you. And, Madam Mayor, I, uh, what are we doing, receiving and filing?
Receive and file.
I move to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Additional questions? Uh, Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I, I too want to thank you, um, City Engineer Klopstein for your work on this. This is really an important step for us, I think, because as Councilman Allen said, we all get calls on this topic, and to have an actual program in place just gives a, a little more substance than, than, uh, a, a policy per se. I particularly am pleased to see that, um, the neighborhood will be more involved in it, because I think we've all also seen neighborhoods that you have one, um, strong leader leading the charge that doesn't necessarily speak for the whole neighborhood. So that, that creates some, some interesting issues for the councilmen from time to time as well. So in order to alleviate that, I really appreciate the, the steps you've put in place in the program and, and, um, our police chief was passing out, we, we saw some T-shirts looking for recruits in that, in, in that department, and hopefully we'll be able to see more of that so we can actually build a traffic enforcement division in our police department against. So I think this is, um, addressing the reality of the situation and also allowing us the flexibility to, to adjust it as that reality changes. So, great work. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your leadership. Assistant Director Klopstein, much appreciated. And we have a motion on the floor to receive and file. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at new business.
Is there any new business? Doesn't look like it.
Great. Then we are on to citizens' opportunity to address the city council and town board, and we have two cards.
We have Dusty Multry.
Good evening, council. My name is Dusty Multry, and my temporary address is Rachel Drive of Peoria, Illinois. I come to you tonight to give you another reminder that Alexis Camry Scott has been missing for 2,159 days. It is exactly nine hours and one month shy of six years that her mother, April, has had to worry day in and day out of her missing. The address that she went missing from and was last seen is 125 Richmond Avenue, Peoria, Illinois. In the recent weeks, people who live and have grown at that address have been arrested on multiple charges that involve domestic-related things against women. They have been released through the state's attorney and the judges in Peoria. There have been arson violations by both a father and a son on two different women. There have been violations of order of protections, and they have been released with $60 bonds. Do we not remember Kayla? She had an order of protection, and she's dead. There has to be something done. I'm not going to read the full report that I was able to receive offline because I don't want to jeopardize any investigation. But in this report, businesses that are centered around 125 Richmond Avenue are afraid to release videotapes because they are afraid of the people that live at this address. I think this city, since 1992, I can go back onto online records, has wreaked enough havoc from this family that something needs to be done. It needs to stick, and they need to be off the street before they actually hurt somebody or somebody else goes missing. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Bill Jones.
Good evening. It's me, Bill Jones, again. I came tonight, I wasn't going to speak. I want to thank Dusty for being here and April. I hadn't seen him for a while. It's an honor to be here with her. She's come a long ways, being patient. Dusty has a compassionate heart, more than what you people know. If you really got to know her, you'd know she's a great lady. So is April, my mother, sitting here, grandmother. As she said, it's been six years. Next month, we've been up here, I don't know how many times, countless times, on the last chief. And I'll tell you, be truthful with you, he didn't do nothing. And I'm just going to be blunt with you. I hope we can get some kind of closure for April. And I don't know if you guys got kids, but I've said this many a times, I don't know what I'd do if I was her. I couldn't do it, you know? It bothers me because the fact that I do a lot of searches for April and that. And you don't know what you're going to find on a search. You don't know. And she's waited six years not knowing anything, really. Yeah, we get bits and pieces of information about this or that, but a lot of things get unlooked, you know? It doesn't get, it just gets thrown under a table. Now, I'm not saying that about the new chief, but I will say in the past it has. There's been things that I know personally that's got thrown under the table and they just blew it off, including detectives. And it just, it breaks my heart, you know? And it should break yours, everybody here. Because you may one day have somebody come up missing. It could be one of your family members, you don't know. You know, as people sitting on this table, the way this world is today, it's the worst I've ever seen it. And that's not just Peoria, that's anywhere. And you can't even get a hello half the time at a grocery store. That's just a fact. I'm just being honest with you. If you get it, good luck. You did real good for the day, anyway. But I just came tonight, I wanted to let you know that April's never going to give up. Dusty's never given up, and I sure the hell ain't giving up. And we will be here, we'll continue to keep an eye out. And we will try to get the information we can on searches. The searches have kind of fell back a lot with a lot of people, big searches. But I won't give up. See, I'm one person, anybody that knows me, and I've got a big family, one of the biggest in this city. And I can tell you, I won't give up until she gets answers. When she gets the answer she wants, then I'll be satisfied. It may not be the right answer, but it'd be something. And if it pleases April, it'd please me. And until then, until I take my last breath, I won't give up searching. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Madam Clerk?
We are at executive session, and I believe we do not have one, so we're at adjournment.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. We are adjourned. Thank you for your service.